Route 123 is probably not what any of us want to do, even if we could fit them. We have nice wide roads, we've never had problems with waste solutions, trucks or anything, but do we want to clutter them up with 160 totes? No, we don't. But is there an option? Is there an option to that that would give us the same capacity?
Service.
So, you know, 16 families' worth of buckets in one dumpster and 16 families' worth of buckets in another dumpster for recycling. I mean, that would work for us. We're not trying to get more than everyone else has. That's not what we're trying to get. We do get stickers. We don't put mattresses on dumpsters and big stuff in refrigerators. We have to get stickers from the Board of Health, same thing. Same thing. Same rules that everybody else is following. And that's all we're asking for, is the same consideration that everybody gets. You know, not more, just the same.
This is the last one. This is it.
Jackie Marasso, 23 billion should trash. I own a single-family home there. And I also own a condo at Kingswood, and I'm on the trustee board. Everything that's been said, I agree with, at least in getting us on track. I do have one thing to keep in mind. We have been spinning our wheels since this started in January, and it really surfaced the end of April. It's now mid-July, and based on the way Kingswood puts their budgets together, we have to have things in place or pretty well organized by mid-September. If we find we have to go out and get our own bids, we have to do that by mid-October. We have to settle a budget prior to November 30th because we have to have it printed and in the mail and presented to our unit owners by December 1st. So I think, at least from Kingswood's perspective, and perhaps from some of the other units in town, we cannot sit around and keep re-meeting every three or four weeks to say the same thing 100 different ways. So I'd appreciate the board getting something going promptly and...
Could you give me those... You said mid-September you put your budget...
We start working on budgets in September, October.
When does it have to go to the condo unit members?
It has to go to the condo unit members by, the way our bylaws are written, December 1st. So we have to have it prior to that, to the printer and ready for posting.
So when does it go to the printer? Now, you're backing up the printer...
Oh, two to three weeks by the time they get the mailing set and the printing.
So you're the first of November now.
In other words, we don't have the last two months of the fiscal year to get us through to December 31st and not be prepared to know where we're going.
No, and I don't think, honestly, I think if we're going to do something, we're going to do something in the next couple of months, and that's...
Yeah. The time factor was starting to kick in.
Which is why, which is why I think Mr. D'Agostino suggested extending it through till December 31st.
Yeah. But I just wanted people to know...
Yep, no, I appreciate that, yes.
We need it a lot sooner than December 31st.
Yes, no question. Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to close the hearing at this point?
We'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second? A second. Mr. Deon, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's just to close the hearing, Tom.
I'm with you.
All right, Mike, you had a motion that you wanted to make, so...
Can I just, before you make that, Mike, I just... I support your motion, but I do think that I'd like to couple it with maybe a secondary one that, for the people that are here tonight from the five condo associations, that we make a commitment to pick up their trash. And in addition, is to, you know, work with the associated boards in the other condos to basically look at a more long-term, you know, solution, how we might be able to accommodate all of them for a reasonable price.
Well, just a couple of things. I think the condos that are here now are all set until December 31st. My opinion from counsel that I've read and stuff like that is that if we allow it just for the five, we could be subject to a lawsuit. And in that vein, I think...
I hope, I would either way you want.
Why? If we include everybody?
No, I'm saying if you include everybody.
Well, that's my... My preference, my preference would be to have everybody that has some skin in this game, including the ones that aren't grandfathered in right now, to work with the administration, maybe a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the... certainly a member of the Board of Health, and whoever is involved to notify all the condominium owners, whether they're grandfathered in or aren't grandfathered in, and see if we can explore the options to help everybody out and to bring everybody under one umbrella. And now, I don't know what that would look like. We've heard a lot of things about totes, we've heard a lot of things about dumpsters, we've heard about... And as I said, you know, a while ago, everybody's shooting from the hip. I think a point well taken is everybody lives in a house, they put out their recycling things, we're going to put these things... I don't know what they're going to put in it. They could put one or two cans in their cupboard. So we're aware of that. But I don't think we're going to accomplish... I know we're not going to accomplish anything tonight, and if the board would go along with it, I think we could, if Mr. D'Agostino would be willing, to notify all the condominium owners, all of them.
I do not have the only association condominium notification information that I have are just on the five. I have tried to have some of the association members, I think Jan, we had talked about getting a listing of the other associations. I have no idea who they are.
I know the property manager of Father Gable's.
Okay. If you can give me that...
Since we give you the name of the property management company from Gable's.
Absolutely.
We'll get in touch with his board. My sense is that they do not want to participate because they use a compactor, but that is their decision.
And that's exactly what we need to know. That's exactly... We're throwing 700 out there, but there could be condominiums.
...and I will get in touch with him and ask him to apply your office.
That would be great, or you can send him my... You can send it... You can go on the website, get my email address, and give me that information, and I'll...
And Mrs. Lavin could get you the ones for the...
We already have hers.
And also the registry deeds, we have five of them in years that's registered.
Yeah, we'll find, we'll get it.
They don't? No. Have a word with...
No, I'm sorry.
It's the same as the way...
Yeah. No, no, I mean, you know what? We're not, we're not trying to throw you under the carpet or anything like that. We definitely want to work with you. It's how we go about it, and I'm putting that forward in a form of a motion right now that I would like to have the administration notify them, and probably by the middle of August, say, or early August, we could have a meeting. As best we could, we'd let everybody know, we'd put it on the town website, you know, notify your associations, and we'd kind of rehash what we can do, like the lady said, maybe, you know, people have compactors, they don't want to be involved, maybe we could do it with dumpsters, maybe we could do it with totes. I don't know. You people know the process better than I, and what might work for one condominium complex might not work for the other. That's why I'm saying we have to look at all the options, and that would be my preferences.
Well, is that going to be your motion?
That is my motion.
And it's going to include a member of the Board of Selectmen?
A member of the Board of Selectmen.
A member of the Board of Health?
A member of the Board of Health, and well, whoever...
Condo Association trustee.
It has to be the condominium associations, yeah.
And Mr. D'Agostino?
Yeah.
Yes, when you're saying that, it would be easier, just a suggestion, is to work with the trustees from the condominiums?
Trustees. That's fine.
Because there's three, four, five, I don't know how many, instead of having everybody come back?
No, that's what I asked if it was trustees.
That's what we need to know, Jan, is exactly what... Whatever's going to work best for the people.
That's just a good...
That's what we want to do.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Can the board suspend the deadline? Because it sounds like it's going to take a little bit of time. The deadline is December 31st. It's split up.
They could if they wanted to.
Well, right now, I'd like to start with this. And then we'll see, we'll see how we go, how we proceed with this. You know, there's a lot of different things that can happen between now and then, you know.
But I think, I think the point is, we want to get this done sooner rather than later. We understand that you guys are under constraints as far as budgets and approval with unit owners and that sort of thing. So I think the commitment is that we're going to meet somebody from the board, some town manager, somebody from the Board of Health, and see if we can't come to a resolution. And again, maybe we can't, but if we can, that's great. And so I think that's the commitment that we're making, or we'll maybe make.
Just to put it in part of the motion, too, if the town manager would like additional people, and under his suggestion, we could add that if that's possible, too.
No, yeah, I think, I think that's fine. But I think that, you know, we've got to keep in mind also that we would have to go back and appropriate additional money at the fall town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, at the annual town meeting, it didn't pass, the amendment didn't pass.
Right, we understand that, but that could, could we not do that in the fall town meeting?
Yeah, we can do it much before December 31st.
Right. So we should, we should be able to come up with some solid options and answers to all of our questions, which is going to vary from one condominium to the other, I'm sure. So, again, that's my motion.
Is there a second? Second? No? I'll second the motion. Tom?
Just as a point of information, when I requested this to be put on the agenda, it wasn't for all the condos, it was for reviewing and reconsidering the policy of either including or excluding the five condo associations from the new trash collection. And the way I understand the motion is, there's no certainty here. I mean, they could not, they may not get trash.
At this point...
We may not know to whenever. To me, I think that we should make a decision, we should make a commitment to pick up these five condo associations' trash.
Well, that's not, excuse me, Tom, that's not the motion on the floor right now.
Okay, but well, the point of information is, how did we go from five to everybody in town?
I think as a result of the evolving of this discussion and input from the audience, and I don't think it's beyond the scope of what we're discussing.
And we have legal opinion that has stated that if we do it just for the certain condominiums and we don't include them, we're subject to liability.
Right, and that's a consideration.
And that's what I am not going to put this town into a liable situation knowingly. And I also think it's fair to include everybody into the process. We've already been notified by some of them, so, I mean, I don't, I don't...
You can make, you can make a motion after Mike's motion.
Yeah, 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 I understand.
So there's a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Ken?
I have no problem with Mike's motion, however, I want to state those five. If you want to make a second motion for the other newer condo units, then go for it. But my concern is, I want to make sure that these five that had trash pickup before and had it removed have the opportunity to get it back if they fit into whatever this committee decides.
It's all the same wash.
Well, it hasn't been removed. I mean, we're still doing it to December 31st.
No, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know, I have a problem with the other ones that came on board at a later date. They weren't grandfathered in, they were all approved with the knowledge that they weren't getting trash pickup.
Exactly.
Now, all of a sudden, they say, "Yeah, we'll think about giving you trash pickup now." I don't think that's right. If you want to make a second motion after those initial five, then go for it.
I don't fault, I mean, I can't be any clearer than what I'm going to say. I'm not going to put the town in a liable situation, haven't had opinion from counsel. I'm not going to do that. So if that's what you want me to do, I'm going to state it one more time, I'm not going to do it. I'll accept all the condominiums. I know the options might not work. Probably is all set up for these people. But just like the lady said, this one has already said, "We get a compactor, we're not going to do it." So until I get that information, I'm not going to...
I would think it makes more sense to include everybody, and then if people want to opt out, then they can opt out, but...
At least we gave them the option, and they can't come back later on and say, "Well, you didn't include them."
You didn't give us a chance.
But I think you can do it the other way, too. Include these five and then look at the others.
Well, but we're not even talking, at this point, we're not talking about renewing anybody. We're talking about sitting down and seeing if there's a reasonable solution we can come to. And if you want to make a motion after this one to renew these five, that's certainly within your right to do that, but this, this motion has to do with just setting up a committee to sit down with all the condo associations to see if we can come up with a solution to the collection of their trash within the town budget. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So the motion does not carry.
I'd like to make a motion to include these five condo associations, which was the topic of discussion in the new trash collection system. Within the guidelines and frameworks that have been described by the town manager, which, as I understand it, the cost is $45,000 or less for commercial pickup to be worked with with these condo associates, these five. So in other words, what I'm saying is, there's a cap on it, it's $45,000 or less, and to be worked with potentially a board or a committee with the selectmen, the Board of Health, and, you know, representatives of the, these five condo associations.
There a second?
Do we need to do that?
I'll second that for discussion purposes. Now, what are you saying about the $45,000, a cap of, what does that mean?
Well, that means that, again, what I feel is that if you go down the path of trying to put totes to Mr. DiAgostino's numbers here, I don't think it's going to work. Where today you have a dumpster system that seems to work for these folks very efficiently, and if there's any issues with the recycling or whatever, is to take care of that, and he's putting a number at it of $45,000. And I think if you talk to these people, I haven't heard it unfortunately, but I think they've all gone out and got estimates of what it would take. And I believe, I believe they'd have to tell you, but it's under $45,000. And if you go down that path, I think you've got a much better chance of looking at the other condos in that same vein, if they want to opt in, or if, you know, there's some way we can do it in that sort of a, of a fashion. As opposed to buying, I don't know, how many totes would we have to buy? That frankly, from what I heard from Jan and others, is that they don't need them all, you know? They don't need them all. The dumpster system works for them. And I think the other thing for me is, I think we should get away from the notion of trying to open the existing trash contract that specifically says condos are excluded, and work with either this hall or another to pick up those condo, these condo people's trash in a similar fashion as they are today. And to me, I think that financially, we'd be able to do that, and I think we have a better chance of including the other condos potentially than we would if we go down this path, the single-family, so they get two totes, we go out and we buy more totes to put out in front of their house. I think that's crazy from a financial analysis viewpoint.
So you're saying that if Kingswood comes back and after review, it's going to be more than $45,000 for Kingswood, then what happens?
No, $45,000 is for the entire...
For all of them.
For all five. For all five of them. So if all five condos, if we agree to vote to let them get picked up and it costs more than $45,000, what happens then?
It doesn't work, it doesn't happen. And the reason I say $45,000 is, one of the members told me, and I think it's the largest one, or next to the largest, it was $10,000 to pick up their trash for the entire year.
$45,000 to pick up their trash?
No, $10,000 for one of them.
Okay, but for all five condo units, $45,000 to pick up their trash and dispose of it and pick up their recycling?
Yeah.
Yes, what he said.
Yeah. I mean, does anybody have any information that would...
We're about $2,200 per area.
How about Stonegate?
That's to rent, that's for the, not to rent, that is, with Waste Solutions, for a four-yard container, $2.96 toters for the recycling, and weekly pickup. Stonegate was, he went out with three bids, two of them were between $5,000 and $6,000 for recycles and regular trash, including the rental of the dumpsters, Waste Solutions was close to $11,000.
The advantage of Abbott and getting the recycling is, in this contract, there's money for recycling. Now, there isn't?
Well, I, you know, I commend the motion. If it makes sense, I shouldn't have spoke, if it makes sense to reopen the existing contract and include these, you know, we're reasonable people here. I think the point I want to make is, I think we've kicked this can far, long enough, for the last six or seven months. I think these folks should go home tonight with some sort of certainty that this board agrees to pick up their trash, which includes recycling, you know, for the foreseeable And however you make it work, I think reasonable, John, and these people are reasonable, I'm sure we can get it done. My only comment is, I think when I saw the $45,000, I think what I'm hearing, we could do it for less potentially, but maybe not.
Can I just say, Tom, I know you want me to go, but...
No, I don't want you to go, I just want...
No, I just want to say, I was at the town meeting, and I did ask of Mr. D'Agostino about how much the cost would be between now and the end of the year, and I believe it was $16,000, so we totaled $36 for a year. And I had stupidly made a proposal, saying, "Well, can we take this out of this budget and this out of this budget?"
Not for the year, that was only until December 3rd.
Six months.
Six months.
Right, not for the whole...
Thirty-two, $32,000, sixteen is sixteen.
So that's $32,000. So that's less than the $45,000 for the five of us to continue, because I was saying, "Well, can we get the rest of the six months?" So I just didn't know where the $45,000 would come from, because originally at your town meeting, it was the policy.
Well, again, he got it from Waste Solutions, provided...
The $45,000, I think, is for the year. That's from Waste Solutions, it's not my number.
Just, just on Tom's motion, I would, I would say this, if, if we do...
I didn't negotiate.
End up voting for this.
I'm not in a position to negotiate for private...
My feeling is, at that point, you're committing to the other condos, because we've already have requests from Mrs. Lavin, who represents one of the condo associations, asking that they be included in the condo pickup. So if we're going to go with five tonight, my feeling, again, just my opinion, my feeling is, we're committing to all of them at this point in time, which is not something I want to do right now.
Just because, my motion was to discover the options. I don't know if what they have there now is working, not working, can we improve on it, can we make a change? I think by voting five right now, you're just saying, "You five, do whatever you want right now, continue on the way you're doing." I want them involved in the process. I wanted them to be part of making the suggestions of how we can do the best for the town, not just carte blanche, "You're all set, we'll see you, we're out of here." I strongly think that had the option, that had prevailed, it would have been all set and we would have moved forward. I'm not so certain now, but whatever, it's up to the board.
Well, I would hope we can blend these two motions into one.
Yeah, I think we're close. Because I don't disagree with you, Mike, and I don't think these folks are opposed to doing that, is to work with members of this board, the health, the town manager, to come up with a...
Well, again, Tom, I think, I think they are, only because if you're committing to these five tonight, then you're committing to everybody. Based upon what we have from legal counsel as to whether or not we're going to be subject to a potential...
That's their opinion.
Well, I...
Because let me, let me give you, let me give you another scenario, is, the other scenario, if you want to talk about fairness, could these folks come back and say, "It's not fair for you not to pick up our trash at the condo when you do for the other residents, and they move, and they move to..."
No, I don't, I don't think so. Basically, based upon an opinion from counsel that we have, I don't think they could come back and do that and be successful.
I think there's other information that's out there that would suggest that's not the case.
That's like this battle, because we've been picking these people off for 20 years.
And I agree with that, Ken, but I...
And the other people haven't been picked up.
Well, we have a motion...
They haven't complained now.
Well, they are complaining now. We have a letter from Mrs. Lavin requesting that they be picked up, so...
Okay, well, let's look at that in a separate motion.
Right, so no, yes.
These, these folks, I think, for 20 years, and I didn't realize Mr. Coyle had the information where specifically in planning board or zoning...
It was not planning board or zoning, it was Board of Health.
Well, no, he said today, if you heard what he said, he said he talked to the...
Mr. Shepard gave us the...
Oh, that, yes, that.
But he talked to the chairman of the planning board, there was indicated that, that was the deal when these other condos came in after '91 and '92, no trash.
Right, but that, these folks didn't have...
Why isn't that a legal document?
These, these condominium associations, although they were initially built, weren't included with trash either. They had to come in petition to get included in the trash.
Yeah, I know, but they did. There's, there's a ton of evidence to...
But my point is, now we have others coming to petition for trash.
Okay, well, let's look at them.
Well, if we've included them in...
Don't hold these, don't hold these guys out here, Andy. For me, you know, say, "Well, we might get it." It's a separate issue.
No, it's not really. I mean, you're talking about being equitable. If everybody is in the same boat, then everybody's in the same boat. All the condos get picked up or they don't get picked up? That's just my opinion, but...
It's mine, too. It's one town.
Right.
It's not one town that has special interests here and stuff. I respect it, the way you people have conducted yourselves. I think you, you've seen me at the meetings, I've gone, I have a concern, a genuine concern. I think you've been mistreated, I know that, okay? But I also have a real responsibility, I think, in sitting here to say, "I'm not going to just make that decision and then get the town in what I consider to be a liable situation." Haven't received opinion from town council, but that's the likelihood of what would happen. So, you know, again, it's, it's up to the board.
And Ken, just to your comments earlier, I mean, you had the letter that you had sent or expressed, you know, to us a few months ago, and then tonight you've said it again. And your letter specifically said, "I want, if they're going to be picked up, they're going to be picked up like every other single-family house." Tom's motion isn't doing that.
Well, she just spoke to, making a friendly amendment to that, so that they do work with Board of Health to do that.
What if they can't? I mean, I think tonight, they've, we've heard that, in Kingswood at least, they don't see how that could even work.
I'm sure they can work something out. That's what Mike's motion refers to, working out issues.
Right, but we've defeated that.
Whether it be an area where the 16 toters can go, rather than being, you know...
I'm trying to, Kenny, I'm trying to get everybody under one roof.
Right.
That's what I was trying to do, is get everybody under one roof and not, and discuss it, because there's a thousand different options, I'm certain of.
Exactly.
And, you know, that was what I was...
The question I have, though, why are we being so dogmatic? If we can't abide by what rules are in place today, and if there's a system that works for these folks, what's the issue? Why are we so dogmatic? It's got to be two totes, whether we need them or not.
Well, that was Kenny's proposal.
Yeah, but he's saying that, he's, he's willing to work that out on how best we go about it.
I think that was the beauty of Mike's, that wasn't, to me, that was the beauty of Mike's motion, so everybody could sit down and see what would... Maybe, maybe totes work for one condo association and they don't work for another, and, you know, for a third is a different proposal, but you're not going to get to that point now because we've defeated Mike's motion.
Kenny gave a letter that described his concerns over holding the individual homeowner to one, you know, one set of rules, and then the condominium owners to another. And that, I can see, but I can also see, and I respect the fact, that we don't, we can't tell people how much they should recycle on the individual homeowners, so we can work with the condominium owners and implement some kind of a program.
Give them the tools to do it.
Give them the tools to do it. And that's what I wanted to do, was to give everybody and include the ones that wanted to come, the ones that might not be grandfathered in, and have it, you know, go from there. And, you know, come back to the Board of Health and come back to the Board of Selectmen with a good proposal that hopefully, and I couldn't guarantee you, but everybody would be amenable to.
All right, there's a motion and a second to reinstitute trash pickup to the five condominiums that trash was discontinued for up to an amount of forty-five thousand dollars, correct? Is that your motion?
I'd just like to make an amendment that they actually work, use part of Mike's, that they work with the Board of Health to try to, you know, follow the same... Pardon me?
They can't work with the Board of Health.
They can't?
They can't because the Board of Health cannot give them, to afford them every opportunity to recycle.
Say, work with the town manager.
No, it needs to be the Board of... The executive function and the delegation of, and I'm reading from the same opinion that council has given, the determination of policy for the town is an executive function delegated to the Board of Selectmen under the provisions of the Charter and under General Law, Chapter Forty, Subsection Four, that provide, in pertinent part, that the town may make contracts for the exercise of its corporate powers on such terms and conditions as otherwise authorized in accordance with duly adopted charter. The town's contract and authority is vested in the town manager under Sections four dash three J of the Charter. Thus, in my opinion, the implementation of policy with respect to solid waste collection and disposal by the town is determined by the Board of Selectmen, while contracting in support of such authority is undertaken by the town manager. You can't ignore that. I mean, that's, but... The Board of Health is not, in my opinion, authorized to promulgate contracting policies on behalf of the town with respect to solid waste collection and disposal by the town. Thus, in my opinion, the Board of Health may not dictate that the town will collect solid waste from condominium complexes, and this goes back to nineteen ninety-one. This was, it's about condominium complexes as such directed would be beyond the scope of the Board of Health's authority. They can't do that.
But as our executive officers, could you do that with the condos?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so, you know, I think Kenny's...
All I'm saying is that if you, everyone points back to this nineteen ninety-one agreement between the Board of Health and the condominium complexes, the five of them that are here. The Board of Health does not have that authority. It never had that authority. It acted outside of its authority as a public entity to even do that.
But, I mean, that's really... Hold on, please. That's kind of irrelevant because they've been getting their trash picked up now for twenty years, twenty-three years.
But let's not make the same mistake twice.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, but instead of the Board of Health under our executive office...
No, no, I would rather have a Board of Health member involved. But as far as the actual authority, it still rests with the Board of Selectmen and the town manager. That's who's gonna make the decision.
So could you put together a committee of people to work with them?
If you want me to, and that's my desire, I'll do that. I mean, not my desire, your desire, I'll do it.
Well, the difference between, hold on, hold on. The difference between Kenny's motion and Mike's motion is Kenny's is limited to the five, and Mike's was including all the condominium associations. That's the difference.
I think you gotta include them all, to be very honest with you.
Yeah, but we could do that in a separate motion.
You can't work with five and then work with the rest of them. Everybody should work together. It's gonna come out the same and wash. You're just making it more complicated.
I heard putting it on the town warrant, this and that.
It could happen.
Okay, that means nobody gets it, right?
It could be.
Yeah, and I'm saying I don't want that.
And future unit, future condo units to town would automatically get trash pickup?
Let's say that again.
If a future unit comes to town, condo unit, two-hundred, five-hundred unit, they would automatically get trash picked up? Absolutely.
Well, if you're including every other one, I would think you would have to, honestly. I mean, I know, maybe, Tom, you don't respect the fact that we've got legal opinion here saying that that's what we should do, but...
Did the legal opinion look at the documents that were filed when these other ones came in?
I think that they looked at, I think they looked at what happened and not at times.
That's not a legal document if a planning board says that we're gonna exclude you?
No.
So they have no right to say anything to any developers coming in then?
How about this? You take our motion, but we, part of the motion will be to contact legal counsel to find out if that's fair and proper, and if it's not, then they'll automatically go to...
Already have that. Why are you, I don't understand. Why?
Where is it?
It's been emailed to us.
And what does it say? It's all or nothing round? Is that what it says?
No, it didn't say that. It said, it cited a couple of instances and said you would be in a situation that the likelihood is that you could be sued. And, you know, God knows what happens when you go to court. Maybe you're gonna sue them back to two thousand and one or nineteen ninety. I don't know. Well, I know that, and I'm trying to avoid that.
At that point, you have to put the other ones on. You know, what can you say? I mean, I think you should. I think we should look at the other...
Then why do you vote against the motion?
Because I don't think you should hold these people hostage.
But that wasn't holding them hostage. You still had, you still had the chance, hold on. You still had the chance to make your motion to include the five.
Okay, and your motion got defeated, and I made a motion to include them for up to forty-five thousand dollars, these five.
Right.
That's the motion.
I understand that, yeah. But I thought Mr. Coyle was amending the motion.
Yeah, I think he did.
To the committee?
Well, they need to be explicit as to what we're doing here, so everybody knows what we're doing, because I'm not certain what we're doing. I understand that there's a motion to reinstitute trash pickup to the five condominiums that were taken off previously.
Up to forty-five thousand dollars.
Up to forty-five thousand dollars.
And work with a subcommittee of the one that he just stated to try to provide recycling services?
No, trash pickup.
Trash, well...
And recycle.
Right, right. To afford them every opportunity to recycle as homeowners are required to do.
Under the direction of the town manager.
And the Board of Selectmen.
Well, you, yeah, well, you, you know, would appoint, we'd agree to who would represent the Board of Selectmen and whatever other parties you want to bring in.
Does that, what does that include? Just these five or does it include everybody?
Just these five. And then this next motion would be to...
Oh, we're taking one motion at a time.
Okay, well, I'm just pointing out for...
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Everybody understand what the motion is?
It's just for these five, right?
Forty-five thousand dollars and...
Is that right?
Up to forty-five.
Up to, and to explore options for recycling and trash pickup with just these five. Correct?
Correct.
All in favor? Opposed? You had another motion, Tom?
Well, at this point, I mean, it seems like a deadlock to me.
Well, you said you had, you don't have another one.
Well, no, I was assuming that it'd be a favorable vote on including these five. That's why we're here tonight. That's why I requested this. It was for these five. It wasn't for everybody. The next motion was gonna be to include all the condos on trash pickup and recycling, but not to specifically to exclude these guys.
Well, that wouldn't exclude them if you want to make, if you want to make that motion.
That's fine. That's exactly what I was saying. We're gonna include everybody.
At some point in the future, we're gonna come back.
That's what I think. We gotta move the ball.
Yeah.
I will, I will try the motion again. Like to make a motion, certainly include these people, the spearhead, and I appreciate the fact, and I think I'm not gonna rehash it, why my opinion is, but we should explore the possibility of options for all condominiums. We're gonna notify them. We're gonna put the committee together, like you said, under the direction of the town manager, by a member of the Board of Health and whatever, and see if we can't come out to something. I think these guys are held safe. I think they're pretty good. There's a good, there should be no reason why we can't do something with these people right here. It's the other ones that I'm trying to defend.
Wait a second, wait a second. How about, how about if we did it this way? How about if we said that the motion would be that we would look to include all of the condominiums, however, that we will not deny these five, so that we're looking at the whole but not denying the five. That way, you know, we have two charges. The first charge is that we would, I'm just trying to get a resolution, that we would do, that we would look at all the condominiums. Let's say condominium A, B, C said, no, I don't want...
That's fine, John.
But we are not going to deny the five that are here.
In our packet, the things you provided me with, it says that we would, we can't do it like that. We have to include everybody.
We do, but let's say that XYZ condominium association decided that they didn't want trash pickup. Now, the motion would be that we would have to include them all. So in essence, you're including everybody, including the ones that don't want it. Let's find out who wants it and who doesn't want it, but we're not gonna deny these five, and we may expand it to beyond five. But it may not include everybody. And I think we're getting hung up on words. But I understand what you want to do, which is to, is to check with everybody and find out if they want condo pickup. If they want condo pickup, they'll be included with the five. If they don't want condo pickup, they would be excluded from everybody else. And to do it that way, you would propose an emotion that would basically say that we are going to pick up, we are going to explore the options to provide trash pickup for all condominiums, but we are not gonna deny the five that are currently enrolled.
I don't like the word deny. I'd rather use the word that's gonna include trash pickup. These five will be included regardless of any resolution for the others.
It's the same thing, Tom.
All right, well...
Same thing. I would, thank you. Forty-five, that would be including the forty-five thousand dollar figure?
Yes.
Right.
Very good amendment.
And talk about the other thing about the committee.
Well, that was part of John's suggestion. I think the committee would consist of a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Board of Health, the town administration.
So these people are gonna be on regardless. Any outcome of any committee work or whatever?
If we decide, let's say throughout this whole thing, that we decide that the toters are the best way to go, and we all agree to that, then that's what we'll do. If we decide that we're gonna do a combination of a smaller container and a second container for recycling, and we all agree to that, then that's what we do. If it's just the toters without recycling, then I will tell you right now, we can't do that. You know, so there has to be, if we just say that these five are all set, they can go home, then there's no willingness for them to work with us. They've got their commitment.
That's what I see.
But let me finish. But the issue is that we need all of the condominium association people to sit down and either say, yes, they're gonna work, they want trash pickup. No, they don't. Those people are out. Who was ever left will sit down and fashion a program that's gonna work for everybody. And I think it meets what you want to do, which is to include everybody.
Oh, I respect their opinion. I wanted their help. I wanted them to sit in the same room with the other ones. I respected their opinion. I wanna work with these people. They've proven themselves to me. And so I wanted to include everybody under one umbrella. But I, you know what? We gotta move the ball. We got a big agenda here. We got, I can't, I got a big day tomorrow. I gotta go. Come on.
Somebody wanna make...
Okay, so I'll accept that motion. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second. It was a forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand dollars.
If only these five commit, then it's up to forty-five thousand dollars.
That's right. But if the others commit, then we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, we need more money. We don't have it in the budget. We're gonna have to... That's right.
Right, we've discussed that, boy.
That's right.
Well, no, actually, Mr. Coyle, Mr. Coyle asked, Mr. Coyle asked the question, and the question was, everybody would be included? If that's what is determined, yes, everybody, yeah, even no, yeah. You can't exclude, in my opinion, you can't exclude...
I think if the group works well together, and I'm sure it will, I think you'll come away with some certain policies or some certain ideas that will, can affect future condos going down the line. That's what my hope is with it.
I think there's always room for more recycling, less trash.
But to the point is, you don't know what people put in on the homeowners.
All right, let's, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye opposed? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, John, for the Solomon's decision. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I request a one-minute recess for biological break?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can get Mr. Donovan while you're out there.
Well, before we calm him back in, there's another one that he has a problem with, which is Mr. Lavin.
Oh, okay. Is there a second? Ken?
I'll second, however, I'd like to, there is one mistake on item thirteen on page four, where we talked about, Mr. Coyle thought of awarding a stipend for employee selectmen to think about this and place it on their next agenda. That's not what we decided. We're gonna make a special meeting in August.
In August, correct, yeah.
For what? Where is that, Ken?
Talking about innovative ways to come up with additional revenues. You'll be awake for that one, eh?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. You get that, man?
No, no, what, I didn't get the amendment because...
Item number thirteen on page four.
Okay. Discussion on ways to increase or come up with additional revenues, Mr. Coyle thought of awarding a stipend to employees that come up with a cost-saving measure?
And place it on a, it should be a meeting, a special meeting in August. We're gonna have a special meeting for that.
Okay. We have a meeting scheduled for August sixth. Is that what you want it on? Because I think you said you wanted to do two meetings in August, because you're having so much fun.
Well, I think that was to include this, yes.
Okay, so you want it on August sixth or a meeting after that? Because I think you said you...
What's the regular, what would it be, the regular meeting?
August twentieth.
August twentieth, so do the August sixth.
Okay.
You get that, Ken?
I got it. I'll make sure I write it down tomorrow.
All right, we have a motion and a second as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstained as I wasn't present.
One abstention. Board of Selectmen meeting June eighteenth, two thousand and twelve, executive session.
Making motion to approve as written.
And not to release until all has resolved. Is there a second?
The only question I have is, I don't know, I thought I recused myself from the discussion of school.
You did.
Committee matters. I don't see that really reflected there, John.
Yeah, it should be reflected, I think, was right after you asked for the opinion. I just left, so...
Move the school, union, under year.
So there's a motion to accept as amended by Tom. And a second? Is there a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye opposed? One abstention?
You got the, I abstained on that one too.
Item number two, vote to send letter drafted by council to special municipal employees. This was, we had asked Popeye and Page to come up with a letter to send out to all special municipal employees within the town. Actually, I think that was your suggestion, Ken.
It was, yeah. I read the letter. It's very good. I think it encapsulates exactly what we had discussed, and I would move that we authorize the town manager to send the letter out along with the accompanying documents.
Is there a second?
A second.
And a second, any discussion?
Could we include on there the MassGov Ethics Backslash Education Training Resources? There's a website that details this in detail. It'd be great to put on there, I think. People get this, they can go to that website and learn all about it also.
You mean on the...
Maybe on the letter itself. If we send this letter out or the form, just the website.
Are you talking about the link for the state ethics that was...
Yeah, there's a special link just to this issue.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, vote to confirm or reject town manager's appointment of certified building inspector, certified building commissioner, Marshall Adams. John?
We, as everyone knows, the state had changed the requirements for building inspectors so that they all have to be building commissioners, in that we had hired Marshall Adams as a temporary, although, as all can remember, I did provide an appointment letter to him. Rather than, and we went through an interview process, and we decided to keep Mr. Adams in his position until which time either eighteen months elapsed or he had received his certification so that he could continue in his employment. Within that eighteen-month period of time, when he was appointed to fill the full-time position, I believe it was in January, that he has received his certifications within that period of time. And so therefore, he is a full-time building commissioner, and I would ask that the board, to continue that appointment as a full-time building commissioner effective this meeting.
Any questions?
Nope.
Tom?
By getting this new certification, is there any salary impact to that? Are you gonna be looking to bump up the salary?
There's no salary.
Is he gonna be looking to see a higher salary to continue working here in Abington?
Well, you know, he would be considered for any salary increase in the future that other employees would be considered for, but that because he received this certification, his salary does not increase.
So you would be looking to redo his salary grade then because of this?
No, because the scope of the position is the same.
I'm with you then. That's good. Thank you.
This is a requirement of the position, correct?
This is, excuse me?
This is a requirement of the position, that he be a certified building commissioner.
That's correct. It's a state requirement, not a local. Our local bylaw calls for building inspector.
Good, Ken.
I would move we confirm the town manager's appointment of Marshall Adams as building commissioner.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, we've already done. Item number five, appointment to the Board of Selectmen member as alternate member of Plymouth County Advisory Board. I believe that was a request by Mr. Deion, correct?
Yeah, we did receive some correspondence that they felt...
Yeah, we, we did receive some correspondence, that they felt Plymouth County to have an alternate member, if I, you know, serving in that capacity, could not make it, and passed...
Right, you were unable to make that meeting.
Yeah, I couldn't make the meeting on Thursday.
There should be an alternate appointed, in the event that the primary can't make it.
I don't think there's a lot of heavy lifting, I, I think this was just unfortunately, they, like we did the other night, there were a lot of interdepartment transfers, I'm assuming they got a qualm, but it would be nice if another number wanted to serve as an alternate.
Anybody interested?
I would make a motion that Mr. Franny, as father being of former county commissioner, would be happy to serve as an alternate.
Kenny will do it.
Is there an upcoming meeting?
You didn't say no.
No, no.
You're only the alternate.
No, they don't either, they meet at night, nice try.
If, if the board would so honor me with the vote, I'll take that.
You'll take, I move we appoint Mr. Coyle.
As the alternate member, is there a second?
Thank you, Kenny.
Is there a second?
Oh, of course.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six, appointment to full voting member of the zoning board of appeals, and Chris Aiello has asked that his name be withdrawn from consideration, so that would leave just Mr. Mullin, who was currently an associate member.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we appoint William Mullin as the full member to the zoning board of appeals.
And that's a three-year appointment, I believe, from, because it's replacing Mr. Conter, who came up this year, so it will go from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen.
I'll second that, I'll motion, just...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, we'll take the vote first.
Is, is it just one position, or is there...
There's one, this'll fill the...
Okay, so there were gonna be two people, two candidates for one position, now we have one, okay.
For one position, right, and now that's so open up, an alternate membership, because Mr. Mullin is moving up to, yeah, so we'll have to repost the, for an alternate member, I guess. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Just, just, I don't know if we can, but I hear a lot of people, or a few people have mentioned to me about, is there any way we could have the zoning board of appeals meetings televised? Can we authorize that or push that issue or something?
Well, if you, if you remember back to...
No, I, I know we did that.
Part of the bylaws that were passed, it, part of the amendments to the bylaws that I believe had passed, but, was that the board could recommend that different boards and committees be televised, and you could, we could recommend that, that the zoning board and, and manage to do the planning board as well.
I think the zoning board in particular makes some decisions that affect town in general, and there's some questions been asked to me, just recently, actually, quite a few, just, just an idea to see what the, you know, the technical aspect is, and how people are involved in it, and the decisions that are made, yeah, I don't, I, I don't know if we ask that out in the CAM or...
Well, I, I think that what we would do is that, you know, we would send notification to, to comply with the bylaw, I think we should send notification to the zoning board that the, the board of selectmen is recommending that they be televised, their meetings be televised once a month, or whenever they meet.
Yeah, actually, I thought...
And then I think we should send a CC to the CAM access.
I was watching TV just before I come up here, and it was a zoning board from another town having a meeting and a bat flew in, so it's made it Batman, you know? All right, that's fine, thank you.
Item number seven, appointment to alternate position of conservation commission, Martin Williams.
That, that has been withdrawn. No, he's here. Oh, I'm sorry, very sorry, I apologize.
Wow, wow, this is your appointment?
I had a...
No kidding.
I had a...
He just sat through two hours.
Two hours, man.
I apologize.
Can you come forward, Mr. Williams?
My bad.
Thank you.
Is he ready waiting after all this time?
You must really, you must really want it. Just introduce yourself.
Sure, Martin Williams, live at Rock, one thirty Rockland Street, Abington, obviously Abington. Forty-nine years old.
You're looking for an alternate?
Excuse me?
You're looking for the alternate position?
Yes, I am, sir.
Just give us a quick background on a little bit, just maybe.
Of myself?
Yeah, yourself.
Pretty much in the automotive field my whole life. At the moment, I just, I'm working actually for Lowe's next door. Not really much, you know, just, just kind of surviving in the world, you know? I'm the father of four children, they, they live in Canton with their mother. Been involved in politics before, or I've been, I lived in Canton when I was married with them, and I was actually on the finance committee, a couple other committees in the town, I actually ran for public officer as well, it was actually the planning board. Did not get elected, but I ran against a tough incumbent, so, but I, I get out there, I try to get myself noticed, and I like to get involved. I moved to the town recently, and again, I like to get involved.
I'll make a motion, oh, I'm sorry.
Anybody have a question?
Before you make a motion, I just wanted you to know that there are no, that's what happened, there are no alternate...
Currently, there are no alternates.
Currently, the, the conservation commission has full membership, no alternate membership. So by doing this, you will, you will create at least one alternate position.
But they've had alternates, right, Nancy, they've had alternates in the past?
Associate members.
Associate members.
Yeah, would have to be. But it wouldn't be an alternate, it would be an associate, versus an alternate member who serves on the zoning board.
Make a motion to approve as an associate member.
As an associate member?
As an associate member, correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Sean.
I would imagine.
Yes.
All right.
You'll get a letter from our office, an appointment letter, you go down with the appointment letter to the town folks' office.
Okay.
And square it.
All right, thank you.
Give you a whole bunch of information about open meeting laws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, appointment of Suzanne DeJustburg as council on aging director. John?
Mr. Chairman, we, we have accepted the resignation of David Klein, who has taken on a full-time position in another community, which I think he should be congratulated for, I think that's great, that he's, he's moving on to full-time employment that we couldn't offer. It gives us a good opportunity, as I have discussed in the past with the finance committee, of looking to have the opportunity to consolidate the position to one council on aging director. In doing so, I think that, you know, Suzanne has served in that capacity as a part-time position. There was a question as to whether or not she was, that the two positions were considered acting positions. The only information that I have is that prior to my arrival, because they had been serving in the position for a period of months, the Dory Jameson, acting as a town manager, had moved the, the appointment from acting to, you know, permanent part-time. So there was some question as to whether or not the position was ever moved from acting to permanent part-time. It was at, at the direction of Dory Jameson prior to my arrival. I, I can't speak to it, so I don't...
Will this affect the budget in any way?
No, no, actually, it will not. Actually, I think there might be some salary money left over. Because we're paying one for, we're paying for thirty-four hours, for thirty, and this will be thirty-two, be full-time thirty-two.
Is there a job description for that position? I, I know it's one of the positions that's being entertained as being a union position, and I know that in, in that cycle, we've been told that there had to be, you know, a job description written down for each one, is, is there something that we should have looked at legally before that we move forward with that? I mean, not, not, I'm not, certainly not opposing, Suzanne, I'm just talking about the job description, the number of hours, and if in fact, how we proceed with that.
Well, I, I can tell you that because it was two part-time positions before...
Yeah.
That there was a strong argument that the position would not be considered to have enough hours to be, to be part of the union. But I think as a result of moving this to a full-time position of thirty-two, that it will create a union, this will create a union position, I think.
And that's fine, again, my question is, as long as there's a viable job description that spells it out, and we don't...
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be talking with, tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with the council on aging at nine o'clock, and we'll discuss putting a job description together for that position.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we confirm the town manager's appointment of Suzanne DeJustburg as the council on aging director.
A second? A second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine, town manager report.
I don't have a report, yes, I think that I'm done.
Nothing? Item number ten, public comment, any comment from the public? I don't think there's anybody left. And finally, there's executive session to discuss fire union collective bargaining proposal to the town.
Can you roll call vote?
And a motion to enter executive session.
And not to reconvene in public session.
For purposes of discussing collective bargaining regarding the fire union and not to return to open session. Is there a motion?
Do you want to put the motion first, though?
Do you want to find out, I mean, I don't know if...
I'd rather go into executive session and find out.
I made a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
And a second? Any discussion? If not, Mr. Dion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain, because I'm not participating.
Yes.
Yes.
But I'm not gonna vote yes unless Mr. Donovan agrees.
No.
So we will not return to open session?
And now you can throw it on.
Thank you.